Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this lovely day. Lewis and Clark County Commissioners Meeting, Tuesday, June 10th. And we usually start this with a pledge of allegiance, and we will do so now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, our friend Brandy has assured me they've got the air conditioning on, and it is two degrees cooler than it was when she got here. Let me introduce everyone. I am Candace Payne, the Chair of this Commission, at least for now. To my immediate left is Commissioner Tom Rolf.
Good morning, Chair Payne.
Around the corner from him is Brandy Spangler. She is in control of the air conditioning and also keeping us online and abiding by the rules of recording. And next to her is Greg McNally, who is head of the Planning Department for Lewis and Clark County. To my immediately, or my immediate right is Commissioner Andy Hunthausen. Good morning, Andy. And our friend from the county attorney's office, Nico Hash. And at the end of the table, probably the most important people here because he helps keep us headed in the right direction, Roger Balls, our Chief Administrative Officer. So, welcome.
Good morning.
And then I'm supposed to remind everybody that up in the front of the room, there's a little table up there, and there is a sign-in sheet. We'd like everybody here to just, you know, sign in, let us know who you are, and if you could, you know, put a phone number or something in in case I decide I need to ask you a question, that would be good. And we start off today's adventure with a consent action item, which will be presented by Roger Balls. Memorandum of Understanding between Lewis and Clark County and Blue Bell Load Water Users Association Incorporated. And Audra, oh, we're going to have Jenny Chambers instead of Audra. We've got a stand-in. Come on.
Chair Payne.
She doesn't have to stand up. Okay, go for it, Roger.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, this is a consent item for us today. It's Item 2A on the agenda, and again, it's a consent item for you to consider, and staff does recommend approval of that item. Commissioner Payne, you just read it into the record, so I won't repeat that, but staff does recommend approval of that memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Any comments from the Commission?
None here.
So, should I have a motion? What? I have to have public comment on this. Okay, public comment, anything to do with the memorandum of understanding between Lewis and Clark County and the Blue Bell Load Water Users Association Incorporated? Seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne and I would move to approve Consent Action Item 2A, memorandum of understanding between Lewis and Clark County and Blue Bell Load Water Users Association Incorporated. It's explained by Mr. Balls.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this memorandum of understanding, oftentimes known as an MOU, but we don't use acronyms here if we can help it. Any further comments from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify the same sign. This motion has been unanimously approved. Thank you. I can sign this. I think we should have a drum roll for this part. This is the action items, and pursuant to my wishes, we put this on today's agenda because I think it's pretty important we get some discussion going on the best way to handle this. We have a petition to address health, environmental, and code violations taking place at 7710 North Montana Avenue in Lewis and Clark County. And I'm just going to introduce how this kind of came to be in front of the Commission. I live out there. I drive by this place morning and night, and it's been a mess. I've lived out there for 23 years, and at first, it was just this cute little house and trees around it. Well, as time has gone by, the original owner died, and in her will, she left it to her daughter, and her daughter was named as the personal representative, and then nothing was done, and this is real property, so it has to be formally transferred. It can't just, you know, hope it goes away. And so, but nothing was done. The court, because there had been no action in several years, the court, what, they dismissed the petition for this estate, and so now it is sitting, just waiting. And as it waits, the property is becoming inundated with tents, campers, cars. There are a lot more people living on that lot, and they only have one sewage hookup and what appears to be several people in need of a toilet. This has caused a lot of the people living out there a lot of concern. We're concerned about our water and our sewer and driving by the mess, and who knows what's going on. Last, let's see, a month ago, on May 8th, we received this petition, and it is signed by at least 77 people who live out in that area, and asked us to petition the district court to remove the personal representative in the estate and appoint a successor personal representative who will properly manage the estate. So, we talked it over with the county attorney, county attorney's office, and he said, "The private property of our individual citizens is something we have to treat very carefully because private property rights, they're a big deal." And then we looked at the code book. Look, I even brought the code book for you, and it says that the county is only allowed to do certain things, and I don't think this falls into that category. So, our hands are kind of tied. When you want to jump in any time, Mr. County Attorney, you just let me know. I'm kind of, I've been dealing with this for so long, I assume everybody knows everything about this, but please step in.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, I just, I wanted to jump in as you all continue your discussion about this. I wanted to comment on a few things that's already been said so far. So, the property was not in Ms. Wiseman's estate when she passed away. There was a contract for deed, and so what we found, our office has very much looked at this issue and is continuing to look at it. One of the interesting aspects of this is the warranty deed transferring the property to the name of, to Rose Wiseman was filed after the close of her estate.
Okay, just to get everybody straight, could you, okay, Rose was the older lady who died?
Yes, she is the decedent.
And, oh, those fancy words, dead. And then Corinne is her daughter?
As far as we've been able to look at it.
Is Corinne here today? Her dad said that she would be here, so I hope she shows up because we're trying, what? Oh, you, okay, and good, thank you for coming. We're, as you can see, we need information. We can't make decisions without appropriate information. Could you say what your name is? Oh, come up to the microphone, sorry. Andy's got 18 years of experience. He knows how to do this stuff. I'm just learning. And your name is Dakota, like, and you are, McKinnis. Okay, and I talked to your dad on the phone?
Yes, yes.
And his name is Mike?
Yep.
Oh, I have a hard time with names. Okay, Dakota, can I just, can I get your phone number? 4221, okay, and you are, what's your mom's name?
Corina, Corina.
Corina. Eena. Okay, all right, we're going to go on with this discussion, and then later on, we'll, we will have public comment, and at that point, then you can come in and tell us whatever you want, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for coming in here.
Thank you.
Why is the county attorney sitting in the back of the room? Okay, so, would you proceed, Nico?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, no, I just wanted to add for you all as you were moving forward, I think the important aspect of this situation is unlike other situations where a public administrator might pick up in a state where there hasn't been anyone as part of any sort of document, that would be a PR, and that there aren't any known relatives or heirs. In this case, you have an individual who passed away, the estate was open for quite some time, the estate closed, and after the close of that estate, a warranty deed was filed in the name of that decedent. So, this is a little bit of a unique situation where you have property transferring after someone has passed away and after their estate has closed.
I want to make sure I'm understanding the language that you're using. So, the decedent, Rose, owned this property. Oh, it was held in what she had gotten a loan on it?
There was a contract for deed.
Okay, which is a loan with the property as?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so you're referring to something that is a promissory note that we have found, that's later on.
Oh.
The situation that I'm talking about is a contract for deed where you have a seller and a purchaser, and a purchaser gets a, what I'm going to call a limited property interest in that, but they have to make payments over time. They don't make those payments on a cer, this is just generally speaking now, they don't make payments over a certain time. The seller can then repossess that property. That's the 50,000-foot approach.
Okay. So, who is the seller, or who is, who is this contract between?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, it was, from what we've been able to find, it's a, it was a Mr. Jerry Jakovic, I think I'm pronouncing his last name correctly.
Oh, yes, okay.
And so, when Ms. Wiseman passed away, that estate was open for quite some time. Then the estate closes, and then, and then a couple months after her estate closes, we then see that a warranty deed is filed to her name. Generally speaking, that's, in a perfect world, that's not how property ownership gets transferred. So, I'm just saying that, one, to correct, and I guess clarify a few things that have already been said, and, second of all, to explain that this situation is very different than our normal situations where we have someone passing away with property in their estate.
If it was easy, they'd let women and kids do it, right? Sorry, quoting my dad. So, who, so Jerry Jakovic, isn't he, was he dead when this was, when this, what, the foreclosure of this document, or when he filed it? Had he already died, or was he still alive?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, from what I can tell from the records, I believe Mr. Jerry Jakovic also had passed away, and so.
And so, we got two dead people transferring property. Is that what you're saying?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, that's what it looks like from the records, so.
You know, Tom, if you have got anything that, I mean, this is supposed to be a discussion, not a lecture from Candace Payne.
No, I think we're laying, you're laying out the facts, and I think the more we learn about the facts, the better we are.
Well, the facts, we have the benefit. This is a petition that was filed with the Commission, and it is signed by, I believe, 77 people of, who are concerned about the situation. They too drive by this property every day and have seen it just go down the hill. And the details and the documents of interest were provided in the petition, and they've done a lot of work. The person who wrote this is Mr. Tom Rigg. I don't know what he did in his previous life, but I think he might have been some sort of a lawyer or judge or something. The other person that we have here is Beth Norberg. Beth? Okay, and would you come up and explain the sanitation issues because this is a petition to address health, environmental, and code violations? And that is where, I mean, the county can, we're working on that. I'm not sure we can work on ownership of the property because the county is not an interested party, except the mess. So, tell us about the mess, please.
Chair Payne, members of the Commission, Beth Norberg, Environmental Program Supervisor at Lewis and Clark Public Health. We have had a complaint open at 7710 North Montana for a number of years.
Like, two or seven?
At least until 2017.
So.
Eight years or so. Generally started as concern over junk vehicles, potentially someone else living on the property in an RV, and then it did escalate and start to get worse. We've, we sent numerous notices of violation in attempts to find someone, a property owner, only to realize that both Mr. Jakovic and Ms. Wiseman are deceased. And we have two situations happening. We have violations under our Community Decay Ordinance. That is a commission ordinance that we have at Lewis and Clark County for unincorporated areas in Lewis and Clark County. It specifically requires that notice of violation be sent to a property owner. When we do not have a property owner.
Do you send it to the cemetery?
Chair Payne, no, we cannot unfortunately send a notice of violation to the cemetery. They have to be living. So, we, in consultation with the county attorney's office, have not been able to enforce any of the community decay violations under that ordinance, waiting for the property to change ownership in some way, shape, or form so that we can continue to do our job. We have, this is not the only property in Lewis and Clark County like this. We have a few others where we have deceased homeowners and things, and so we're keeping an eye on that. With this property, we go by about every month, take updated photos, update our file, just kind of keep an eye on what's happening up there. We also have potential violations of our onsite wastewater treatment regulations. That is a Board of Health regulation, and that is regulation governing all the onsite wastewater treatment systems in Lewis and Clark County. And so, with those, we can cite a person. It does not have to be a property owner. However, we have been able to find the evidence we need of that person violating. So, we know there's probably something happening. They're either dumping sewage into the existing permitted septic system on the lot, or they're using the canal nearby, or they're using the ground, or they're, who knows? But we have to physically see and catch someone and have that evidence. I can't go before a judge and accuse someone who I don't have proof of for that, and that's also been a bit binding for us. I've been by the property one time with the sheriff's office. No one was around to be able to talk to. We can inspect the property because most of the trailers and RVs are behind a gated area with dogs that are quite aggressive. I am not law enforcement. I don't carry a gun. I don't, that's not my realm. So, finding violations of the onsite wastewater treatment regulations is also difficult in terms of citing a specific person when there's people coming and going, and we don't know who is who, and we have no ability to send a notice of violation to that specific person. So, if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Beth. I don't have any right now, but as with Dakota, I'm going to keep you right here and where I can, we can get you to come up and respond to issues as they arise between us. So, thank you, Beth. I didn't expect this to be the Candace Payne Show. Come on, help, guys, we're supposed to discuss this.
Well, Chair Payne, I, you put this on the agenda, and I didn't know what your motivation for that was exactly, but we have.
Those cranky people sitting right here.
We have had, over the years, multiple, I guess, feet, we've gotten multiple feedback about this property, and so we have engaged, I think what we've done is we've tried, we've asked Beth and Environmental Health, we've asked Planning, Greg, about planning violations. We've, of course, engaged the county attorney's office, and I think that's our role, is to take concerns from the public, which we have gotten plenty of concerns from the public about this property, and then ask our competent professionals to follow up and see what we can do and what our role is in this. And I think I've had multiple conversations with Beth and with the sheriff's office and their limitations on this, with Greg and zoning violations, and what we can do, what options we have, and then, of course, with Mr. Hash and where the county attorney's office is. And I think the only, the only question I have is, I have no concern about, that we have looked at every option that we have in the current situation. Of course, the way the law reads, we have to follow the law. We can't do something just because we want to. I would really like this property to be cleaned up. I'd like there to be some action taken on the property, but we have to do it within our, within our boundaries. So, if there isn't a current owner of the property, it's really difficult to, to take action on that property. So, my question, you know, is, I've, same that we've had for our staff and our other offices, the county attorney's office, is what can we do? What are possible next steps that the county could take? What, within reason, that we could help to advance this? We, we get it, we have this petition, we get it, that the neighbors are very concerned about it. We're concerned about it, I'm concerned about it, but that, that is, remains my question is what would be the next steps, and how could the Commission participate in taking whatever that appropriate next step is in helping to solve the problem? So, that's the conversation that's been going on for the last multiple years, and it remains. And so, I guess that, that would be the only discussion point I'd like to have, so if we can help people have a better understanding of where we might go next, or what we might try next, that, that would be great, and maybe Nico has some ideas, maybe not, maybe Beth has, and Greg has some more ideas about that, but I think it does revolve around trying to have the proper, the property in proper ownership prior to taking action. Are all of the laws that, at least the way it seems to be, is that you take action with a property owner, and so if there isn't one, what do we do? And how do we do it? And where do we go from there? So, I'll leave it at that, Chair Payne, for now, and.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate your, you know, background being 18 years. Some of you may know that in my former life, I was an attorney, so I look at things a little different than people do. One of the things we have to do before we can petition the district court to take action as requested by this document, it is, has to be done by an interested person, and the list of interested persons is heirs, deвозies, children, spouses, creditors, beneficiaries, and any others having a property right in or claim against a trust estate or the estate of a decedent, ward, or protected person. That's not the county, right? Nico, would you agree?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, yes, so.
Thank you. It's a yes or no question, Nico. I appreciate that. So, I don't think the county is the proper party to be petitioning. Now, I dug through the documents, and we have a person who is, who has been making the tax payments, and I think it's your dad, Dakota, and I had a nice conversation with him on the phone, we talked about this. He's busy pouring concrete today, so he couldn't be here, and I understand, you've got to make a living. But he has a, he entered into a contract with Corinne, and apparently she borrowed some money from him, and he's going, she's going to pay it back, but she also gave him a promissory note? What'd she give him? Yeah. And, and it is a lien upon this property, and so, and part of the terms of it are that when she, when it's all paid off, that he will own 51% of the property. Now, to me, I think that fits in the interested person category here, and that he, and maybe not him so much, the children of Corinne would be the heirs and could possibly be the interested person, and the heirs could have the authority to petition the court to reopen this. Another way that it might work, possibly, and I keep looking over here at Nico because I know he's going to jump up and say, "Don't say that," right? Because if I mess up, this is a problem. Okay, so, Corinne borrowed money from Mike. Corinne hasn't been making payments, I understand, Mike told me this, and so, I suggested to Mike that he could foreclose on the note, on the interest in that note, and have it, have the note declared that he owns the property now. This is a wonderful plan because that way, we have a property owner that Beth can find and talk to about cleaning this up. And when I talked to Mike, he seemed very interested in cleaning it up, but he too is feeling sort of like his hands are tied. I suggested that he needs to talk to a lawyer. I know that's a dirty word, but that's what needs to be done because otherwise, you're going to keep bumping up against the same statutes, and we are going to end up 10 years down the road with that same mess. I'm going to be retired by then. I don't want it to be impacting my estate because, well, anyway. So, that was my advice to him, and I don't know if he talked to an attorney, but I bet Dakota knows something about this. Mike said that he wanted to gain ownership of this lot and then make sure his children got it because, and I, and you know, Montana's a very small town, so you hear things. I just realized now that Dakota is Mike McKinnis's daughter and Corinne Wiseman's daughter. Is that correct? So, Corinne is your mom. I think she is the one who has the power to do this. I think she is the one who has the power to do this. The question, I think, from talking to Mike, is that lawyers cost money and, you know, she doesn't have a lot of money to, to do this with. That is the situation as to what the heck we're going to do with this petition. And I'm open for suggestions. I've made some ideas. I told Mike about it. I don't know if he talked to you about it. Nico, any more comments?
Chair Payne and commissioners.
It's an adventure, isn't it?
Always. So I think even after, after you take public comment from the board, I think it's, it would certainly be appropriate for, as a board, you guys to encourage and direct staff and the rest of, of, you know, the county to continue to work with this issue. Certainly everyone's been continuing to address or trying to address it, wrestling with the issues that the board has talked about. But I think it'd be certainly fair to, again, after public comment, you know, also directing staff to continue to address this issue and trying to, I guess, clarify the property ownerships the best that we can as well.
Always wise counsel from Nico. Thank you, Nico. And so, in my humble opinion, I think we need to have a quiet title action done by somebody who has an interest in it as, under the statute, it does not include me. Dakota, I understand you have a couple of other siblings? Okay. Well, then, you have anything further to say? You, Andy?
Chair Payne, I appreciate your intent to resolve this. I do. It's great. And your opinions, and I'm glad you said that, opinions and ideas about how to move forward. So I just, just to, because Nico's probably thinking this over there, that the county commission does not give legal advice, does not. We, we aren't the lawyers of, of the people out there. And we, though, you've been one in your past life, that's not our role here. And the county attorney as well is the attorney for the county and for the county departments and those kinds of things. And does not, really worked hard to not play the role of giving legal advice to our citizens. That's not their role. They need to, if they need legal advice or going to pursue some of these ideas, they'd need to do that with their own attorney. So just, just to clarify that we're not giving legal advice here or recommending anything necessarily, these are just ideas and opinions of the commission. And other than that, I really want to work towards solving this as well, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And, and we all want to try to get this mess cleaned up. This is, what I see is kind of like getting information from your mother. You know, you don't necessarily have to take it, but she's over there yammering and, yes. Tom, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion?
Question I might, if I might. Is there somebody that's living on the property now who might claim at least partial ownership in the property? Why don't you come on up front and get to state your name?
Potentially, last I knew, Corinne was on the property. We don't go out there very much. We don't have contact with her. We have tried. Same situation as everybody else. It's really hard to get in contact with her. She's not accessible. She might try to, but she hasn't in all these years, so I don't really know what her plan is.
Okay. And, and I guess, do you, a thought if I might? Do you have thoughts on, that you've thought through about how to maybe resolve this? Since you obviously have some interest in what would happen.
I don't have a whole lot. I mean, we have discussed things, but I don't have a whole lot of, like, our hands are tied. We can't, she's out on the property. We can't get a hold of her. We can't get her to pay anything that she owes, any of that stuff. So I mean, we also feel stuck. Like we have said, there's, I don't know where we can move on. My dad is looking into attorneys and whatnot to see what we can do from here on out. But at this moment, I don't know exactly what his plan is and what we're going to do moving forward. We do have interest in the property. We would like to keep the property. It's my grandma's property, so I would like that. But financials come into play, all that stuff, so.
Then, so, so you, are you actively, actively working through trying to do this?
Yes, I'm working with my father. We are, we've been in contact with people. We've, we are working on it.
And I guess, my father, do you have kind of a timeline?
I don't. I don't, not right this second. All this, we saw the article and we reached out to people, so we are working on things. But I do not have a timeline right this second, no.
Another follow-up.
Yes, Tom.
Do you know any of the people that are living there?
My, as far as I know, my mother, but I don't know anybody else out there, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you very, very much. If I, can I, can I ask Nico a question?
Well, before you do that.
Okay.
Is your mother living in the house that was your grandma's? Or do you know?
I don't know. I don't know the situation for sure out there. I know pretty much what you guys know, that there's a lot of campers, that there's a lot of stuff out there. It's a mess. I don't know exactly who lives out there. I don't, I don't know where she's staying. I don't know if she's staying in the house, if she's staying in one of the campers. I don't know.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate your coming in and helping us get this mess cleaned up. And now, thank you, and we're going to continue with your question for Nico.
Okay. For our interest, it seems like this is, we're, we're kind of precluded from doing anything, if I understand it right, until we know who really has legal and physical ownership of the property.
Chair Payne and commissioners, and Commissioner Rolf, I think that does a pretty good job summing up the unfortunate position the county's in. Again, a lot of the authority that the counties have is drive-through state statute. So again, for example, for community decay, it's a, it's a state statute that provides you have to give written notice to the property owner. You know, that's not something that the county can just change its own community decay regulations on. As we've heard from Ms. Norberg, since we don't have a property owner, she then has to shift to then individually, or I guess, prove certain individuals violating onsite wastewater regulations. In other situations, we've had very similar circumstances, but we have a property owner. So if we can't find the person, we at least have a property owner. This is the one that is, I think the county has very much continued to work on. But to your specific question, Commissioner Rolf, yes, once we have a property owner, that certainly almost sets the catalyst for what the county can do. And I think encouragingly, you have folks who are, who have an interest in this property that have shown up today. They've at least let you know they also care and are interested into it too, which I think further highlights the complexity, the complexities of this, rather than just, you know, no one's sitting back. It's just, this is an extremely unique situation that we all find ourselves in.
Go ahead.
Just another, if I might ask Ms. Norberg a question. This has got to be frustrating for you as well to not know how we're, how to approach this.
Yeah, Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, yes, I think that's the answer. This has been probably the most challenging case we've had. It's really frustrating to have to just sit on it and not be able to enforce something that's very egregious. And so, yeah, we're at this situation where it just really is very unfortunate and very rare. And we're just unable to do anything, which is just frustrating from our perspective of protecting residents in Lewis and Clark County from public health violations. So.
And I, I just would like to ask that maybe, since we, we seem to be waiting for clear ownership here, and in most other situations that you have, there is a clear owner and you, you know who you're, who to, who to talk to or who to serve with papers or something like that. Is there something that you and maybe Nico could work with, work together on or to, to help us have? I know we've got other areas, other places where it's frustrating. And recognizing that private property rights are very important to, to people, there has to be a way for neighbors who feel offended by the way things are done to have some redress. Is there some change in our, in our regulations that we could make that might allow neighbors to have a clearer line of redress that we could, that without violating private, private property rights? And I guess what I'm asking is if you could kind of get your heads together and come up with some ideas for us.
Yeah, Chair Payne, commissioners, Commissioner Rolf, very good comment. Currently, how we receive complaints is typically a neighbor or someone calls and complains about something. Come January 1st, the statute did change for community decay. You will need at least three property owners within a quarter mile, I was checking Nico, the quarter mile radius, to file the complaint. So it does eliminate in terms of, with a private property situation, if I'm just driving by and arbitrarily I decide that I don't like the look of something, I can't, lack of better term, pick on that person. We will need three property owners come January 1st. Now, in terms of our existing complaints, what we really try to do, I just want to give a little context to how we approach community decay violations, onsite wastewater regulations. Once we've initially sent notice, we do invite ourselves to the property if possible, if we feel comfortable enough to do that, to walk the property with the property owner, discuss the things that are important to them, discuss what they would like to keep, what they'd like to discard, what maybe they can, and help them organize. So we try to do a little bit of a collaborative effort with a property owner, realizing that it might be very difficult for them to part with certain things and say, hey, can we just organize it a little bit more? Can you put your scrap over here? Can you line your vehicles up here and maybe help them with shielding and things like that? So we try to show a little compassion too. We don't like to just go in guns blazing on these violations, but also work with that property owner. So I don't know if that helps address your question. I don't know if I answered that correctly, but I'd be happy also to work with the county attorney's office on things as well.
And I appreciate your Atlanta and me. I wasn't aware of the new law coming into effect that would maybe make some things a little clearer for, for folks who were in the neighborhood, a way for, a path for them to approach it. And like I said, I very much respect private property rights. I wouldn't want someone messing with my property rights. But on the other hand, I have a responsibility to my neighbors to keep up, keep it up and, and try to do the right thing. So anything that you would like to add? Nico?
Chair Payne and Commissioner Rolf, so.
Nico?
So under your, you know, current community decay process, once a property owner gets that notice, there's the opportunity for them to work with environmental health and to kind of get, I'm going to call it like a corrective action plan, if you will. And so that's kind of that, where we're all working together to try to get, you know, as, as Ms. Norberg was saying, to kind of clean up the property. And so when we have situations that come over to our office, they've already kind of exhausted your process already by saying, you know, can we get to some sort of compliance? Can we have you working, you know, working towards cleaning up the property? That still hasn't happened. Then it does come over to our office. And then we do have to be in court. We do have to prove our case that community decay does exist and it affects, you know, an entire neighborhood, right? The community. So that's where we have certain limitations in this as well, which is it has to be seen from the community, you know? So it's not, you know, on, on private roads, private drives, that sort of a thing. And so we do work through that process and, you know, we, we get a couple, but I think environmental health does a pretty darn good job working with a lot of those property owners. And they kind of, it, I guess it ends at the corrective action plan because someone knows that they need to be picking it up and I think works towards coming into compliance. Obviously not the situation of the subject property of our discussion today, but I think generally speaking, we have a pretty robust community decay process. And I think we have a really good group at the environmental health folks who continue to work on that process, so.
If I, can I, if I might, can I, if I, if I were to sum this up again, I think in my mind, what it, what I'm hearing is that we don't have a clear owner at this point and we need a clear owner or any, and one of the clear, of the partial owners. We need to have that clarified before, before we can go any further.
Chair Payne, Chair Payne and commissioners, I'll do my best to do the yes or no at Chair Payne length. So I will say, yes, what we're needing is a clear owner.
Thank you.
Just, as I'm, you, we're done with you. Thank you, Beth. Back in my younger days, when I was a real practicing lawyer, we would do a quiet title action on property where, you know, we had a, we needed to know who owned the property. We could put published notice in a newspaper of general distribution in the county. And I don't think that we can do that in this case, but wouldn't it be nice if we could? But could you, and this has to do with the protection of private property or guide us through here, Nico?
Chair Payne and commissioners, so what you're referring to is an option under the rules of civil procedure that allows you to provide notice once you have, in the example you gave, a quiet title action. So to provide that kind of notice in civil procedure, you have to essentially show the court, hey, I've tried to personally serve this person. The language for providing written notice to a property owner appears in the community decay statutes, and that is a different, I guess I'm going to call notice concept than what it is in civil procedure. Because when we're exercising and working through our community decay, there's violations in how that is set up is if someone in fact does have community decay, they haven't cleaned up their property. What the authority that's granted to the county is the county then goes in and cleans up that property. So it's a little different than a quiet title action. And again, as, as you referred to, or you reference quiet title actions, in those instances, you have to assert that you have a property interest when you file a quiet title action. So again, our office has very much been, I have been racking my brains trying to figure out how to make this whole thing work for everybody. And in terms of trying to figure out how the county can, that's one of those unfortunate little instances in this situation where you go, okay, well, quiet title action, how do we clean up the property ownership? Okay, well, to file it, you have to assert what your property interest is. In this instance, the county doesn't have a property interest in this property. Same thing with under the public administrator statutes. Our office is ordered to, if the state gets open, our office is ordered to essentially be the PR. That's something we would, we would certainly do. But there are only limited instances where a public administrator can file to open and effectuate an estate. And again, this is a different situation than normally what we see with public administrator situations.
And in this situation, Dakota explained to us that she's pretty sure her mom is living on the property. Does that give us any kind of standing for notice by public? I mean, this, this isn't going to help us. Just because she is hiding under a rock out there someplace doesn't mean, I mean, how, we're not going to find her if she doesn't want to be found, unless, well, her daughter doesn't even know how to find her.
Chair Payne and commissioners, I'm going to speak broadly right now. Even if we know where someone might be, there are processes in which we can serve people. But again, they're not the property owner. So we're still in that situation.
Which gets back to Mike McKenna, right? Is that, yeah, your dad. Because he has this unsatisfied property interest in, it's a contractual interest, but he then fits an interested person. If he did the quiet title action, foreclosed on the, on the note between Mike and Corinne, Mike forecloses on the note, goes through the legal loopholes. Mike forecloses on the note, goes through the legal loopholes, he could foreclose on it and then he would, through contract, not because it's been in an estate or a will or anything, this is just foreclose on the contract and do your thing, Mike. Is that going to work?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Payne and Commissioners, so I've been looking at this from the aspects of the county perspective. I haven't reviewed any of this from, I guess we'll call an outside perspective, a third party perspective or another interested party's perspective, so I don't, I don't have those answers.
Okay, thank you, that's reasonable. Andy?
Chair Payne, just, I think you, if I could ask Nico a question, I think you've answered mostly, but we're probably going to hear it in public comment and just in this first paragraph of the petition, it just says essentially, you know, why can't we just ask the judge to do something about this, to make an order to solve the problem in one way or another? Can, the best, you maybe don't know all this, but the best to your knowledge, what are the, I mean, if we did send a message or request or pass some sort of thing to ask Judge Menahan to take action, I mean, what, what are the limitations? Why does that make sense or not make sense or what, what can or can't he do if he wanted to, or if we were interested in moving that direction? I mean, essentially what, in my mind, they're asking, so there are some limitations in law with that, but maybe just kind of just a little bit of education on that if you could. And if you don't have all the answers, fine, I'd kind of put you on the spot, sorry.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, so if the county were to be petitioning, the first hurdle that the county would have is to say, well, what is our property interest in this? And so, and what is your interest in the estate? Because Chair Payne, as you've mentioned, there was an estate that was opened, now it's closed. And so you have a warranty deed filed after the, after the estate has been closed. So in a, for the first legal hurdle would be to say, well, what, what is the county's property interest in this? Again, we don't, we have a public interest, we have all of our other interests in, in exercising other authority over that. That's not a specific property interest in the property itself. Secondly, because there are heirs and other folks who have arguable claims on the property that would further complicate the county asserting some sort of interest in the property to reopen the estate. Generally speaking, there are very limited circumstances when an estate can be reopened. Again, that's something we've looked at and trying to figure out, how does this, how, how would we be able to kind of shoehorn the county into that? I'm still exploring it, I don't have the answer right now. That's probably, I guess that's probably like some of the first issues of just getting through the door.
Thank you, thanks Chair Payne, appreciate it.
I don't think we have come up with a solution. And so I think I will open this for public comment at that point, if that's all right with the Commissioners? And maybe they've got a better idea than what we've got. Okay, we're going to open this for public comment. Please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and tell us. And I, we don't want to hear anymore about what a nasty situation, we know, but we need an idea to fix it. So come forward and talk to us, please. Not everybody all at once. Darn right, somebody has to.
Commissioner Payne, Chairman Payne, I guess it is, Commissioners, my name is Larry Sickerson. I live at 1000 Wild Wind Road and I have been involved in trying to correct this problem for some time. There is a lot of talk here today about private property rights going on, but I want to flip that coin and talk about the private property rights of us neighbors. This has gotten to the point where something has to be done and I'm quite concerned that there's not somebody in this room right now with regards to property taxes. It's been my understanding that the property taxes on this parcel are not fully paid, they are delinquent, and if that was to happen to me, the county would come after my property. They would have a sheriff's sale and they would collect their back taxes. Why are we not looking at this option on this property to influence or force the hand of someone's stepping forward and claiming ownership? I think that's a valid issue, I would throw that out to the county attorney, that if we got, I'm paying my property taxes, I'm paying your salaries. Why is somebody holding this parcel of ground responsible? And I think that's something that I think you need to look at. I can get pretty fired up about this, I'll try to contain myself a little bit, but you talked about the legal transfer and these quit titles, but is this really legal? I mean, we got two dead people and an action taken on their name after their death, how is that not a fraudulent action right there? If they can't legally do what they're doing, you're sitting there shaking your head up and down, explain that to me. I mean, I don't know, I'm sorry. I don't know if I can do that, but I think that's another question. I mean, was what happened, is it legal? Is this lien that Corina has with Mike, is that a legal document? Can he foreclose with that document you referenced? I mean, there's all sorts of comments and questions here and I guess I reserve the right for a future comment after I hear what everybody else says, so I don't know.
Thank you, Larry.
Very frustrated, thank you for hearing me today.
Larry, we are all frustrated and looking out for people the best we can, so thanks for coming up. Next. We got a lady behind you there, Tom. Tom, there was actually a lady with enough courage, she was going to step up and I know I can count on you, so let's get some fresh ideas.
My name is Carol Cloninger.
Move the mic.
Oh, okay.
I have hearing issues, so.
That's okay.
And then spell your name. Okay, sure.
And we live at 1210 Roper's Road, so we're directly across the street, across Montana Avenue, from this property. And, you know, we've lived there for nearly 20 years. We've seen all the changes that you have seen. We also are in close proximity, so we see a lot of law enforcement there, we've seen animal control, we've seen fire department there, which leads me to, my biggest concern is the garbage and the trash and the fire danger. And we own a lumber company in addition to our other business, which is an electrical contracting company. And those buildings that we have are chock full of lumber to sell and electrical equipment that we use for electrical contracting. There was a fire in, I want to say in the winter this year, probably from a stove, from one of the trailers, and our, our property is probably the most extreme at risk. It, we have a west wind, you know, the wind blows all the time there. So we're in a very vulnerable position. And, you know, all these concerns that we have and probably a complicated set of events, we stand to lose our property if there were a fire. And who's responsible for that when there's all this public comment and everybody is hands off? To me, someone needs to, I agree with the gentleman, but how did this ever happen? How, how, how did it go from a cute little house with some trees to, you know, garbage trucks and messes everywhere? And the human condition. We have people who are living in trailers with no heat, no, no, in the winter, and it was a hard winter. We saw a lot of people coming and going from those trailers. This is a, this is a huge irresponsible action on everybody's part. And, you know, we sit quietly, we don't want to make a, an issue other than that we agree with everything that you're all trying to do. But, you know, legal problems, if you ignore them, they become bigger, you know? And this is a typical example of the lack of somebody's action. And we are the most at risk. Our children are at risk for, you know, aggressive dogs. You know, there's people coming and going from all, all sorts of 24 hours a day. You know, we're up early, we see cars going and coming. We have our dog, you know, I mean, she could get off her leash, she's gone over there. My husband has gone over to retrieve her. And, you know, it's a pitiful situation. And, and, and then, you know, we, there was a young man that found our dog and he called, she had a name tag, and he called and Len went over there and, you know, got the dog and the kid was pitiful. So there's a human condition here that, you know, who's there? Who's there at their own will? Who's there unwillingly? You know, so, you know, it's, it's a big, it's a big problem, but we do not want to see our place go up in smoke. So I appreciate everybody's concern and we've seen this deteriorate, we'd like to see an improvement. And it's a, it's a, it's a very unfortunate state of affairs for everyone. So I would just ask everyone to keep working on it and come up with good ideas and, and, you know, from this meeting is much more productive than the last time I was here. And I understand your, how, how your hands are tied, but our hands are tied and we want to see something happen. So, you know, we'll be willing to give whatever information you'd like, we're, we're the bystanders. So thank you.
Thank you for your remarks, Karen. As I've mentioned, I live out there on, on Yuri Road and I drive by that, I used to walk by that.
I don't go that way anymore, I don't feel safe.
No, I don't either. And we need to do something.
Yeah, yeah.
However, we also have to remember, the people who are living in that condition are not necessarily bad people.
Oh, absolutely not.
They are someone's sons and daughters, uncle, somebody out there cares about them and it may be like Dakota's relationship with her mother, that doesn't mean she doesn't care about her mother, it's just there are people who are impossible to deal with.
Yeah.
And I don't usually, you know, quote scripture, but I'm pretty sure the Bible tells us we have to look out for the least of us.
Yes.
And so how can we do that and still protect those of us who have had the good fortune to have good paying jobs and businesses so we can have a home? And anyway, thank you for coming in.
Oh, you're welcome. And I haven't signed that, so I will when I leave, the, your little roster.
Oh, the, okay, thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep, everybody needs to sign that so we can come and talk to you. Uh-oh, we're losing people. Goodbye. Oh, okay, okay. Anybody else? Public comment? We need some help here, common sense? Nobody else does, Tom, will help. I appreciate all the work you have put into this.
I want to tell you, my name's Tom Riggs. I've been here before. And Commissioner Payne, I really, really want to appreciate you. Extend my appreciation to you for setting up this meeting. This was very important to all of us. The main reason for doing that petition, or one of the main reasons, was to bring the ownership to the top of the list of things that need to be done and you've helped accomplish The only other thing I have to say, in my prior life, I was CPA. Part of my duties was, part of what I did was audit counties. That might clarify some things. But with that experience, I understand there's an organization that you belong to called Mako. And I'm going to offer this as a long-term idea, but maybe you could go to Mako and see if they can't come up with some ideas to put something in the next legislature to solve situations like this. One, one area might be in the administration of estates. When you have a situation like this, then let's set forth some procedures that can happen. The, the second thing to consider is, in the public administrator law, maybe set it up so that when you have a situation like this, the public administrator is allowed to petition the judge, because he's not now, and I understand that. But maybe there's some circumstances that should be put in the law that would allow him to do that. You know, it doesn't happen very often, so it's probably not a real big deal to most people, but maybe, you know, the people at Mako, I know they have a lot of experience at doing this. And, and so maybe over the course of the next couple of years, you could write down your ideas and go to Mako and see if they can't work on it, find some legislators who would carry the law, and you've got my name if you need some help. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any other public comment? Larry?
Hi, Larry Sickerson, again, Chairman Payne. I just want to express my gratitude to Beth Norberg also for the work that she has done. She's been giving me her time and some, some good effort on this and I, and I really appreciate that, Beth, so thank you for that. But, you know, I don't, one last thing I wanted to say is, I don't know if anyone who would willingly step forward and claim ownership if on day one they knew they were going to get cited for the community decay ordinance. So I just don't see a lot of impetus in this Mike McKenna taking ownership of this property knowing that Beth is waiting in the wings to cite him for what's going on out there. So thank you, Beth, and thank you all, like Tom said, for putting this on the agenda and for letting us air our grievances today. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Dakota, do you have anything to say? But would you come up? I'm trying to come up with some ideas and you're about as direct a source as I have. State your name, please.
Dakota McInnes.
Thank you, Dakota. It occurs to me, and I've visited with your dad quite a bit, I mean, we've talked on the phone a couple of times, and I get this sense that he would like, he would like to have the property cleaned up so that he can leave it to the three kids. And he has good intentions, but he, like many people, does not have a whole boatload of cash.
Correct.
And so the cost of, of doing the, the quiet title action or whatever legal steps he needs to take, he's willing, but it costs money.
Yes, it does.
And so it had occurred to me that if we could get some kind of a conversation going that might involve the impact that might involve the impact to, and this has nothing to do with the county. I can't approve or disapprove. I'm just trying to come up with a solution. If a homeowners association that has expressed interest in this had recently acquired a pot of money as a settlement in lawsuit, perhaps they could come up with a donation to help defray some of the costs because it's to benefit all of us.
It is.
And, you know, maybe you can talk to your dad about how to bring this together. And, you know, it's, the thing is, it impacts every one of us. And if we don't kind of, and I can't do it as a county commissioner, it's not a governmental thing that we can step in and impact people's private property. Now, I don't want the government telling me, I've got to get rid of my 12 dogs. I don't have 12 dogs. But as an example, you, you get really protective about, by golly, these are my private property rights, just like Larry's and Tom's. So that might be an idea that if you.
That is definitely something I can, yeah, we can talk about.
Just get your dad moving on this. Tell him not to be so bashful. And I know he's got other concerns, but I really think the county's hands are tied until we can do something to get the title cleared up. Once we get the title cleared up, then we can work on figuring out a way to get it cleaned up. Who knows? There might even be a grant to clean it up or not. Nico?
We're definitely interested. We want to get the property cleaned up. It was never like that when my grandma owned it. Things went downhill.
Yep.
So me personally being her granddaughter, I would love that property, but there's a lot of legal things that come into play. We can't get a hold of Cory, you know? So we are, we are working on it. He is getting in contact with people so we can get this moving.
Cory?
Corina, sorry. She goes by Cory, I'm sorry.
Does she? Okay. All right. I really appreciate you coming in here today. I admire you for standing up and recognizing that this is going to be an unfriendly crowd. But we're not really unfriendly. We just want to get the job done.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Andy?
Not, not, thank you very much.
Not for Dakota? Do you have any more questions?
Just a general comment.
Would, would it be appropriate for me to ask if Dakota would be willing to collect any paperwork representing her dad?
I think.
Is that, is that an appropriate request or not?
I think.
If she would be a point of contact for the potential owners of the property?
Think what we need is them to talk to their own lawyer because we, this is kind of beyond our, but, I mean, she understands that. And so she seems to be young and smart and hardworking and by golly, it's her grandma's property.
That's right.
And we want, I mean, I have my grandma's property, her little old beat-up house. So I'm hoping you can do this. Reach out and remind people that we're all in this together. We'll help each other where we can. But there's things we, we just can't do.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your courage.
Thanks for coming in, Dakota. Andy?
Chair Payne.
Comments in general?
Just comments in general. And then after the comments, after this item, it'd be great to have like a 10-minute break if.
Yes, yes.
Put that on the back burner. No, I'd just like to, in response to some of the public comment, and thank everybody for being here. It is an issue that we're all frustrated about and want to, want to pursue. But as Mr. Sickerson said, I'd like to thank our staff as well. I think everybody's worked really hard within their bounds of authority and within their bounds of the law to do what we can and come up with ideas. Mr. McNally and his staff, Beth, of course, over and over and up and down and all around. The county sheriff's office and then the county attorney's office, thank you for being on the spot with all the, all the questions and all of that. And I'd just like to say, if there were an owner to surface, or if someone pursued ownership of the property, actually, day one, they might on paper get a violation, but rarely if the ownership of any property out there, if they're willing to develop a plan and start working on cleanup and following the rules. Beth is a compassionate and friendly, helpful educator and will work with them to get their property cleaned up. And almost always, these situations don't make it to the county attorney's office and don't get, you know, go through the court process and some sort of violation, as long as they're working honestly and upfront with Beth to clean up the property. So just putting that out there, that it, it wouldn't be necessarily a end, end of the world thing if you took over the property. Beth would work with you. And she's shaking her head, yes. So, anyway, Commissioner, thanks for the conversation. Thanks, everybody, for being here. And I'm hopeful that we can do all we can to look for ideas with our staff and, and move forward on some resolution here. Thanks.
All right. I think we've had an appropriate discussion here. And if progress doesn't, I don't know if we can still do anything, but thank you all for coming in and talking about this problem. We will solve it the best we can, not being miracle workers and respecting everybody's property rights. So, thank you. And we will take a seven-minute break right now because Commissioner Hunt-Housen, Item 3B, Grant Task Order Award to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, presented by Sarah Sandow. Go for it, Sarah.
Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the commission. I'm Sarah Sandow. I am the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The commissioners will consider accepting the Grant Task Order Award from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services Behavioral Health and Disabilities Division for the Crisis Diversion in Montana Communities Grant in the amount of $396,161. The grant period is July 13th, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. This funding opportunity helps to fund avenues to increase diversion from the detention center, emergency room, and Montana State Hospital. The goal of crisis diversion is to provide the least intensive, appropriate level of care to a person experiencing a mental health crisis. Utilizing the three pillars of the Crisis Now model, which include the 988 call center for an individual in crisis to call, the mobile crisis response team to respond to an individual in crisis, and the crisis facility for individuals to go to somewhere while in crisis. Intervening at these different levels will help lessen the amount of people who are experiencing a mental health challenge that end up in the emergency room or the detention center. The county has received this funding for many years with Lewis and Clark Public Health managing it for the last few. Last year, this covered the mobile crisis response team and some startup costs for the crisis stabilization receiving facility. If you go to our Lewis and Clark Public Health website, there's a dashboard that shows the numbers of community members being served in different areas of the crisis system through our three pillars dashboard. At Lewis and Clark Public Health, we keep an administrative fee, but most of the funding goes to organizations who are doing the work. There's an 80% match rate that partner organizations take on when they go into subrecipient agreements with us. For this grant cycle of three years, the crisis stabilization receiving facility is an allowable option as well as permanent housing navigation services. $324,600 will go into reimbursing the purchase of the Journey Home to Many Rivers Whole Health through a subrecipient contract. $52,455.24 is expected to go to United Way for their housing tenancy services. And Lewis and Clark Public Health will keep a 10% allowable amount for the administrative fee. There is a required match of $89,451.39 that will mostly come from United Way subrecipient with part of it coming from Public Health for our administrative fee. Staff recommends approval and during the subrecipient contracts that follow this one, we will have people speak about progress in those areas as well. So this one is our contract task order with the state that we are starting with. Staff recommends approval, and I'm here for questions.
Well, I'm glad because I have a question. Didn't we, I don't remember, did we sell the Journey Home to Many Rivers Whole Health?
Yes, thank you, Chair Payne.
About a year ago?
Last July, yes. A portion of the payment was done in June, and the majority of the payment was done in July. So they did purchase it, and these funds from the state will go to helping reimburse some of the cost, not the full cost. It was more than this amount.
So we sold it to them, and now we're giving them money to help pay them for the privilege of contracting with Lewis and Clark County and acquiring this Journey Home?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Payne. So this, the funding comes from the state and they really are, the state is trying to encourage the opening of these crisis facilities. So this funding that will then go through us back to Many Rivers, it will go, it does feel like they bought it from us and then the money is going back to them to help reimburse it, to help offset the cost because it is quite expensive to purchase the building and run the facility. And we want to make sure successful once they're able to open it and run it.
I believe they haven't been running it, have they?
No, thank you, Chair Payne. So it is not open yet. They are working on starting it up, so we'll get an update in the next section about where they are in opening it. But the payment won't go until it is open. And that will be explained in the next section, too.
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Just further explanation, if I could. Essentially, this is all part of the plan, if you would. So back when this was contemplated and folks were meeting on this and the leadership, behavioral health leadership team met on this, others, we were looking for, as we were contemplating getting the Journey Home into the hands of Many Rivers, we were looking at possible opportunities for augmenting the cost of doing that. And there was an opportunity to apply for this grant, and this grant could pass through from the state through us to help make sure that the Journey Home becomes a reality. It's the third leg of the Crisis Now model, 988, the crisis mobilization team or mobile crisis response team, and then having a facility where people can go. So this was our effort in combination with community kind of effort to say, where can we look for more funding, grant funding to help make this a reality? So this was just a, a grant that was, we were able to use to offset the cost of getting this facility open. And they are now, well, we're here, but they're close. So, and I'm confident that it's going to happen very soon. But that, that's kind of a little more of the history on it. So it's not us paying them. I mean, we're trying, we're trying to work together to get this facility open for the community, for the Benham community.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. I, you know, it's been almost a year ago since we talked about this. Um, okay, thank you for answering my question. Tom, do you have any questions for her? Um, okay. Is, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment here, let's have a motion. Gentlemen?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Grant Task Order Award to Lewis and Clark County Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as presented by Sandow.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this grant task order. Is there any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Grant Task Order to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as presented by Sarah Sandow. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Got to keep my documents straight here. Okay. Item number 3C, subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Many Rivers Whole Health. And our presenter again is Ms. Sandow.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The commissioners will consider the subrecipient agreement with Many Rivers Whole Health in the amount of $324,600 to reimburse the purchase of the Journey Home facility to reopen a crisis facility through the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services Crisis Diversion in Montana Communities Grant.
Read more slowly, please. Some of us don't hear very well.
The subrecipient agreement begins upon execution by both parties through June 30th, 2027, with the eligible expenses beginning July 13th, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. This funding opportunities helps to fund avenues to increase diversions from the detention center, emergency room, and Montana State Hospital. The goal of crisis diversion is to provide the least intensive, appropriate level of care to a person experiencing a mental health crisis. As mentioned previously, using the three pillars of the Crisis Now model, the 988 call center, the mobile crisis response team, and the crisis facility are the three pillars to help in a mental health crisis. Intervening at these different levels will help lessen the amount of people who are experiencing mental health challenges that end up in the emergency room or detention center. The last pillar of this three-pillar crisis system to be implemented in our county is the crisis facility. Our previous crisis facility, also known as Journey Home, closed in 2020, and there has been a large receiving and stabilization gap since then. In July 2024, Many Rivers Whole Health purchased the building that housed Journey Home and has been working to reopen the facility to fill this much-needed gap. $324,600 will go to reimbursing the purchase of the Journey Home to Many Rivers Whole Health through the subrecipient contract so that they can reopen the crisis facility. Reimbursement will be invoiced once the facility is open to taking clients. Staff recommends approval, and I do have staff present from Many Rivers Whole Health here to provide an update on progress on the crisis facility if the commissioner will allow it, with Ms. Jennifer Whitfield.
Thank you, Sandra.
Chair Payne, just a question first.
Mr. Hunt-Housen, you have a question? Go for it.
I, I do, just for explanation purposes. So the last item was the overall task order, the county accepting the money from the state of Montana. Now we're sub, subletting that, or if you will, subrecipient agreements with the parties that are actually going to get the pass-through, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Just for people who might be wondering, weren't we just talking about this in the last item? So now we're, now we're doing the actual essential contracts to pass the money through to the folks that are going to put it into action, correct?
Exactly. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt-Housen.
Just wanted to clarify, Chair Payne. So there wasn't any confusion there?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. Tom, you got anything?
I'd just like to hear from the folks from Many, Many Rivers.
Yes, let's, I would like to have some comments on how this is called coming together.
Good morning, Chair Payne and commissioners. My name is Jennifer Whitfield. I'm the chief clinical officer at Many Rivers Whole Health. And just to kind of provide you some updates on where we're at with the Journey Home itself. To start, the Journey Home Community Coalition was formulated in August 2024, shortly after the exchange of the purchase, and we've had six meetings through May of 2025. Through a previous crisis diversion grant with the state and Lewis and Clark County, we were able to purchase new bed frames, nightstands, the 12 receiving chairs the facility did not have before, a locker system, and some minimal office equipment. That is all done. The current, where we're at currently with that facility is the ordering of the medical cleaning, office supplies, and once in start date, the food will be set up for that. The building has been fully cleaned, prepped, and all of the updates have been done. We did a fire inspection on May 29th. There was one item from the fire marshal that needed fixing. A mountain alarm was out last Friday, June 6th, to fix that item. The fire marshal was notified, we just need him to come back and see the fix, and then we'll have the occupancy certificate. Once we have that occupancy certificate, I've already notified the state, there's two different levels. There's a site surveyor that comes and sees the physical space, should be easy. Journey Home was a crisis facility before. And then there's a program side where we present, because we weren't the company who did it before, we present our clinical manual for running the services that we plan to run, which at this time, we are petitioning for crisis receiving, which is the 23 hour 59 minute where they sit in a receiving chair, and we help stabilize in that short term. And then there are six private bedrooms that are the stabilization where someone can stay up to two weeks. We are asking for both levels of care on our endorsement. We already hold a community behavioral health license, so this is simply an endorsement. So this is simply an endorsement that you have to have to run crisis services. So they're aware of that. They know we're just waiting. We have to have the occupancy certificate before we can invite them onsite. That's part of our application process to them. Once we've done that part, we have already contracted with a company called AB Staffing. They are a headhunting recruitment that the state hospital and Shodare have used to help address workforce shortages in Montana. They're specifically addressing for us the license program supervisor for the clinical oversight. We've already received some applications to review, as well as the nurses and the therapists. We will open that locally as well to see if anyone has interest. But we're in a workforce shortage, and we're like no everyone else. So we're just trying to cover bases and make sure we can staff it. So that part is already done. We already have the leadership hierarchy that the state will require for the oversight meeting, like a medical director. We have a Director of Medical Programs, who's our nursing supervisor. So we already have all of those pieces in place. We also, for the psychiatric portion, we've worked with Frontier Psychiatry previously. We have a meeting with them next Tuesday to discuss them doing the immediate medication management assessment that's required in this level of care. Having that we've had a contract with them before, it shouldn't be hard, because we have a previous relationship. So that will help handle part of the staffing pieces. We won't have to have a 24/7/365 psychiatrist available for the requirement. Once we have the things in place that I've just described, we already have the job postings and stuff to be listed to hire the two remaining positions, which are peer supporters and like a case management care coordinator. That helps with the aftercare. So hopefully, people start breaking the cycle of coming through a crisis facility and start engaging in other community-level services. So that's kind of the status update. I know you guys are looking for a very specific open date. I can't give it. My hope is very much this summer. But I'm reliant on other people at this point, including staffing, for that. So that's kind of where the facility stands. Where we stand as far as kind of the current challenges and how we're addressing the challenges of getting it open is back in January, I put out a draft MOU to our Journey Home Coalition members to see who could help support. We've been to visit both Billings and Missoula to see how their models of care worked. And it takes a lot of community effort to support a program like this. And that is because it's a fee-for-service, volume-based model. And so that means we don't get paid unless someone comes through the door and accesses our service. So if no one comes through, we have a full staff and a facility running with no one to actually pay us for providing that service. So we are going to add to that listing. There was a long list of items that community partners could be a part of. We're going to add referrals, because that's the largest pain point right now, is making sure we can keep people through the door. And then offering out beyond the coalition. No one from the coalition has offered up to sign an MOU as of yet. So that is my next really big priority and needing support with that. Let's see. We do have some grant funding that we have put aside in our own. I don't know if this commission is fully in the knowledge of CCBHC's certified community behavioral health clinics. Many Rivers Whole Health is in our personal second grant with SAMSA in regards to that. And we are also one of the participants with the state in their development grant of that. We have set aside some of those funds that were allowable to do for Journey Home specifically in crisis services. It won't meet the need. So what we've been doing in the meantime is we are meeting with Isaac Coy from the state of Montana and Violet Bolstridge, who runs crisis services. We had a meeting last week to talk about how we can supplement for the Journey Home to open. And then we meet again with them on the 16th, because there isn't an exact mechanism that's going to completely supplement that. So to share with you guys a little bit, right now, the reimbursement rate and both those levels of service are the same. So that makes it really easy, right? We don't have to look at different rates. Whoever comes through the door, we get reimbursed the same amount. So if someone comes through, it's $488 per day per occupant, and they get the whole bundle of the services. With that, and there is a potential 3% provider rate increase that came out of the legislature. So that will actually hopefully go up. We don't know exactly when. But based on that, the expenses to run the Journey Home that we did as part of an RFP for Lewis and Clark County two years ago, the daily expenses, just overall with everything included, was a little over $4,000 a day. So with that, I need 10 to 11 people through the door every single day in order to break even. So the biggest challenge is going to make sure that we can sustain this. When thinking about the delay of why we purchased it last August and started that process, and we're sitting in June of the following year, is we need to have staffing, and we need to have volume to support that. And while everybody says they can use that, I pulled Western's numbers from the last time, from 2016 to 2019, of what they did and how many they saw. So in December 16, and I looked at a calendar year, okay? There was 274 individuals who used Journey Home through Western. The average length of stay, that data was not provided or tracked in a way easily for me. But the average length of stay is three to five days. So I just gave a range. So the range of that is 822 to 1370. Okay, so remember, 800 to 13. In 2017, they had 317 individuals went up. That's great. That range was 951 to 1585. In December, it's about the same of the, or I'm sorry. In the next year, 2018, it was about the same, 314. So that range is about the same. And then there was only six months of data in 2019, but it was definitely less than half of what the previous years had run. What we need right now as a break even is 4,015 billable days. That's four times the amount of what they were doing before. Now, COVID has occurred since then, and we know that people accessing behavioral health has gone up. But we don't have a definite guarantee that we can hit those numbers. So grant funding, supplemental funding, that's going to be pretty crucial at the beginning so that Journey Home name can get out there. We have participated in a couple of different coalitions across the past year that have helped position Many Rivers as being a partner, Journey Home being a part of that. So we are part of the Angel Initiative that is Lewis and Clark County participates in. We are part of the North Central Crisis Collaborative, which is, you guys don't know my, well, Commissioner, you guys might know kind of the catchment area of Many Rivers, but that's our northern counties. And we have been sitting in with Jefferson and Broadwater in some of their local LACs. So really looking beyond Lewis and Clark County to help, like where people may come in our region to need this service, and that Journey Home isn't going to be dependent only on Lewis and Clark County to sustain it, but kind of looking for it to expand beyond that. So we've placed ourselves on those committees, participating actively, attending all their meetings, talking about Journey Home and its updates so that we know that those partners will also refer to us in this time. Additionally, the Billings facility that runs a receiving home, they are too part of the Angel Initiative, and they handle the sort of 911 call to them when law enforcement needs to access that kind of facility. They are partnering with us to be on the other side of the state. So people who are closer to, instead of going to Billings, they would come to us and to Journey Home. So we're working really hard on making sure that we can route referrals in that aren't just Lewis and Clark County-based, which is going to help with the volume issue. Okay. Do you guys have any questions? I'm sure you do.
Andy, you have anything?
Chair Payne, I don't know about a question, but I guess just, I guess, summing up here of this. But I think that's been the biggest challenge all along, is sustainability. So getting us up and going, I think we've kind of got those puzzle pieces put together.
Correct.
In terms of getting off the ground. But it is that sustainability. But I am hopeful, and I liked what you just said, this expansion of referrals and referral sources and kind of the role of a more regional-type facility may really help, as well as I think the state's newfound commitment. And hopefully, that's a lasting one, as well as the CCBHC funding. I hope that that has an annual contribution toward this, because I think crisis is one of the requirements.
It is. And that is one of the three big things that we're working with the state to solve for Montana. I guess there's two other pieces that we've done that I didn't mention. The facility itself also has three involuntary detention beds. We are not currently going to open those right away. We're going to get the other side operational, functional. That's a totally different level of care with different levels of staffing. The first two I can do with the same exact staff and the same model. All of this stuff remains the same. The other side for the involuntary does look different. So I want the team there running well. And as soon as that's a go, we will get the other side. The state's aware that that is our intention. The second part is, is we do a little bit of our grant funding as well for a system called Avell eCare. And this is a company out of South Dakota that provides licensed RNs. We do this in three of our, we're piloting it in three of our counties. And Eastern Montana is piloting it over in theirs, that law enforcement officers who arrive on the scene, these are rural counties, right? They don't have immediate access to a mobile response team. Well, they can call that instantly from an iPad that's got 5G, and the person can connect with a RN who is ready to assess them for their need of if they're going to harm themselves or not, and give a recommendation to the officer on site. They also contract with a lot of our more rural, critical hospitals. So if somebody presents to them, Avell can do the same thing and really help our local providers who may not have the same level of training or the manpower to be able to be like, yep, they need a higher level of care. We can contract and help. And then Many Rivers is the backup agency that calls that person within 24 hours to try to engage them in care after that. So those are two other pieces we're trying to fill. But that could be a referral source as well, as people who come through Avell that then end up with us. And Journey Home could be a spot that we can say, please take them there.
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I also think that the receiving side, which we have not had before, had stabilization but not receiving. So it has high potential to serve a lot of people.
Correct, it does.
There's a lot of need, it seems, out there. I think we'll see folks.
And, yeah, and to be clear, that's not just limited to 12 people a day. They don't have to stay up to the 24-hour mark if they discharge, because that's what's best for them. We can put a new person in that chair. So that is a level that we've never had before in Lewis and Clark County.
And it's also encouraging that that's reimbursed at the same rate.
They are. They're exactly the same.
It's really helpful, I think. So the combination of it all, I'm really encouraged. And I hope that you are, and I hope that we can.
Yeah. It's a lot of work, but yes.
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 Thanks much. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Thank you.
Tom, do you have anything?
Question for you. If you get loaded, what's the maximum number of people you feel like you could help in a day?
Well, through stabilization, you would only be able to do six, the six rooms. Even if you checked somebody out and knew, it would still just be the six per day. So that's kind of how we budget or sort of look at what that would look like. For receiving, you can turn them over, like I said. What I would anticipate, though, given the other staffing models that we've looked at and the requirement of the paperwork that goes in to have someone there, I wouldn't say more than 18 per day on a rotational basis.
But if you could get to 18, if you're breaking, it is 10 or 11.
Wow, that would be absolute. And I would actually probably increase my staffing to just make it a lighter load on those that are there, simply because crisis work is very difficult. It's a high burnout position. And the people that we're contracting through, this is a different kind of contractor that we have signed up with. Typically, when I get temps, that's it. You can't get them. They stay with the company. They move on to their next temp position, or we sign a new contract. These ones, if they like us, after six months, they can become our employee. So if they come to Montana and love it, they can stay.
Chair Payne, if I might follow up. Do I understand that at this point, there is only one facility in Billings and this facility?
Correct, at this level of care. Correct. Missoula had one called Riverwalk, and it was a partnership agreement. Actually, partnership is also the Missoula FAQ, so sorry about that. But they actually had to close because they didn't have enough volume to maintain.
All right. Are there others that are in contemplation at this point?
No, there is a lot of talk from the state, though, about trying to build regional crisis facilities, but nothing has been finalized. And to my knowledge, there isn't anyone else looking for to do this. It's expensive. And it's hard. And workforce is really, really challenging for a, even, we run a lot of group homes, both in mental health and SUD, with 24/7/365 coverage. Staffing is a challenge. So then you add crisis, and that gets more so.
And a follow-up, if I might, Chair Payne? As we're talking to people about this, in layman's terms, what's sort of, how can we describe to somebody the sort of services in layman's terms that will make it easier for people to understand what we're able to provide?
Sure. So once Journey Home opens, what you can say is Journey Home is a crisis facility that has a no wrong-door access, meaning you can self-refer. You can be a professional refers, a family member that refers, teachers, whoever that may be, even a parent. And they are there to help stabilize the person in the moment of crisis and offer opportunity for an assessment, which is often a key thing that people get delayed on. Potential for a medication review or looking at, you know, a quicker timeframe into that. And then follow-up services so the person can find out what's going to be available to them in the community. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another person?
Nope, she's just here for my moral support.
I thought she was going to come up and tell jokes or something.
Oh, maybe. Heather, are you interested? No, she's not interested.
Never mind. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing no public comment, I think it's time for a motion.
Thank you, guys.
Chair Payne, I would love to be the one making this motion.
Wait a second.
Hey, hey, no fighting.
Chair Payne, I move that we approve the subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Many Rivers Whole Health, as explained by Ms. Sandow and the folks from Many Rivers. And thank you. Let's get her done.
Now, we can ask for further comment from the commissioners?
Yeah, and I'd like to second Commissioner Rolf again. Get her, let's get her done. It's been a long time coming. I'm very excited about it. It is the third, third leg of the stool, or if you want to look at it that way.
I'm just, I really appreciated the explanation of what you've gotten done and how many steps have been taken. Yeah, it, it is very exciting. And for the benefit of the people who, not only the people who use your services, but, you know, our law enforcement people and the, the teachers and the, the people who are out there in the trenches trying to get this taken care of. So let's get her done. Okay. Do we vote?
All right.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the sub-recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Many Rivers Whole Health as presented by Sarah Sandow. And where'd she go? Oh, there she is. Yes.
No, I'm just saying, I'm.
Yes. But I didn't write your name down.
Jennifer.
Okay, and Jennifer. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The, this motion was passed unanimously. Item 3D, sub-recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and the United Way of Lewis and Clark area. And this is the third leg, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sarah Sandow.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The commissioners will consider the sub-recipient agreement with the United Way of Lewis and Clark area and the amount of $52,455.24 for their housing tenancy work with the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services Crisis Diversion in Montana Communities contract. The first one we heard, this will be one of the two sub-recipient agreements that come from that first contract. The sub-recipient shall provide $65,570 in match. The sub-recipient agreement begins upon execution by both parties and will be through June 30th, 2026. Under this agreement, United Way will support one full-time tenancy support specialist that addresses the housing needs of adults who are disabled, chronically homeless, and seeking permanent housing. Services to be provided include the assessment, identification, arrangement, and provision of pre-tenancy housing stabilization, tenancy sustaining, and housing-focused service coordination. Staff recommends approval. And I do have staff present from United Way here to provide an update on housing tenancy, if the commission will allow it, with Ms. McVeigh.
I think it would be delightful if we let her come up and tell us what they're going to do. Boy, you came prepared. You brought your whole computer.
I have my whole computer because I didn't have time to print it, sorry.
Don't be sorry. I'm glad.
Means I have all the information I ever need right here. Good morning, Chair Payne, commissioners. My name is Emily McVeigh, M-C-V-E-Y, with United Way of the Lewis and Clark area. So yes, we are working on housing tenancy specialist position. It is part of our Housing First work. We do a lot of work under that umbrella of our, of the United Way. So far, we have been working with the Montana Healthcare Foundation. They are working with several agencies in Montana to help support tenancy specialist work around the state of Montana and helping us collaborate to make sure that we are all working together. Because part of this means that we can also bill Medicaid. Generally, we would not be a Medicaid billing agency because we are not a hospital or a healthcare provider. But we will be partnering with an agency that does that kind of work to help with that work, with, to help with billing. So we are working with Dan Ani through the Healthcare Foundation to help collaborate on that kind of a process, to make sure that we are doing our best work to collaborate. We're doing our best to bill at the rate that makes the most sense and to make sure that we're billing, not, that we're not billing necessarily ourselves, but somebody else's billing that knows what they're doing. I used to bill Medicaid when I was running group homes. I don't necessarily want to go back to doing that work. I like to do the work I'm doing now. I can do it. I do, I, I think I have a better use of my time at the moment. So we are working on all of those pieces collaboratively with other state programs around, so in other communities that are doing similar work. So along those lines, we have worked with those agencies that are already providing tenancy support specialist work to get job descriptions and position information so that when we go out to hire, we have the information that they have used to hire a, a person in this community that follows along the same lines of what they've been doing in the communities where they know that those positions are doing the right kind of work. So working along lines with the other groups that do case conferencing work and coordinated entry work in Montana. So we're just trying to work collaboratively along those lines. We have done, we've partnered with the Housing Navigator position work in our community for the last several years. So this is not really new to us. We have been working on creating, and what we, what I call independent living training, because I come from group home world, and that's what we called it there. We've been creating a program for clients to teach them independent living training skills because that is actually the third piece of housing tenancy specialist work. And we have created a program called Good Neighbors United, where we actually have mentors for people that are becoming housed. And we've already been doing that work, working towards this program coming online. Because many of our clients, as they become housed, haven't been housed forever or a good portion of their adult lives, don't have a lot of those skills. So we have mentors that are walking hand in hand with them when they first become housed and staying alongside them as they stay housed for hopefully a long period of time. But they don't necessarily know the rules, how to communicate with their neighbors, you know, how to cook, clean, or go grocery shopping. A lot of those basic skills we think people should know, but a lot of 18-year-olds don't enter adulthood knowing. So we have people working with them. We're building out actually a video training series because having those groups ongoing is hard to do with unsheltered people because we don't necessarily know where to find them from time to time to teach them those skills. So they can actually find those videos. We'll be able to find those videos on our YouTube page once we get them built out. But the trainings for the mentors are being built out at the same time. So kind of building out that program as we learn more about how to build the tenancy support specialist position. And we'll help Jeff, who is our community impact coordinator, who runs case conferencing, to be able to do more of the background work and a little less of the case management work. Because I often say to him, you are not a case manager. And we need to push that to somebody who is doing that work. But this person will be able to do some of the pieces that we've lost since we lost that housing navigator position in communicating directly with the landlords and the property management companies and helping match up the people that need housing into affordable housing and communicate with them in preventing eviction when it comes to that point so that we're not at the point where we have a person with several evictions on their background and we cannot find them housing anymore. So there's a lot of pieces going into this where we've been working up to the ability to hire. And now that we're ready to hire, we've got a lot of pieces ready to, as soon as we can push the button, ready to roll, so.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Ms. McVeigh, thank you. This is huge. I am thrilled to support the venture. I, I think that you hit on some really important points there. And I want to emphasize them for those that might be watching today, that this, this is, this is really big. I think there are some folks that have been less enthusiastic about trying to find housing for folks because this other piece of support has not necessarily been consistent in our community. And so having that support for someone who may not possess some of these skills to stay housed and giving this support to landlords as well so that they will be more likely to rent to someone who may not be fully skilled in, in taking care of their property. But with that support, they feel a lot more open to doing that potentially. And so I just think this is a big step forward. And I'm hopeful that we can advance. I mean, there's some of this work happening through Fuse and other pieces in the community. But this is one more big piece of the puzzle that I think helps significantly in, in housing folks. Because as Commissioner Rolf has said in the past, I hate to support housing people without the supports around them. So this is those supports around them. So they will be getting that kind of, we'll call it case management, that they really need to assist in education and referrals to other organizations in the community that can really support them in keeping their housing. And that's really important. So thank you very much. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Absolutely. We know that housing a person doesn't work. We need to keep, we need to figure out why they became unhoused and then keep supporting them in the reasons that became unhoused for however long it takes for them to become stable. So that is our goal in this project, in our supportive housing project, in our Housing First project. Everything that we do revolves around supporting the person long term.
Thank you. Tom, do you have anything?
Yes, if I might ask a couple of questions. Emily, in the past, we've had Housing Navigators, like at our place and whatnot. Where would you anticipate this person being? Or do you have a location for them at this point? Or are you still working on that?
They'll be housed at United Way.
At United, at your office? So if we were, if someone were to find someone that needs housing and, and was, was thinking they'd like to move into it, we send them to, to our United Way? And then, and this person that we're going to fund here will take, help work, help them work through the process?
Yep. I anticipate they'll be out in the community a lot. But yeah, they would start at our office.
All right. And are you going to coordinate with, with any other places in this effort? Or just having them out in the community will probably make some?
Yeah, because we're the, we lead case conferencing. We're the coordinated entry for Helena. We lead all of the housing conversations. So everybody's at our table more than once a week. We have everybody in housing and mental health and substance abuse at our table or on our Zoom repeatedly throughout the week talking about housing. So we are very much invested and involved in this conversation.
If I might follow up, Chair. That's the point, I guess I was, I was heading, heading toward was the fact that we've got a place now to, to make this work. And they will be out working in, in all of the places, like our place and other place, things around the community. But, and maybe even hanging out at the hospital once in a while and, and, and at the Journey Home and what, working with people that need that help. So I think, I think you've got a good vision there. I think we can make, it can make a difference for our community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any further comment? Sandra, do you have anything you want to add? Then is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the sub-recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County, Lewis and Clark Public Health and the United Way of Lewis and Clark, of the Lewis and Clark area.
Chair Payne, I am pleased to second that motion.
My, this is a popular debate here today. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the sub-recipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and the United Way of Lewis and Clark area as presented by Sandra Sandow and Emily McVeigh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E. Oh, there she comes again. Contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Christa Weathers Consulting LLC. This will be presented by Sarah Sandow. Go for it.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The Strong Roots Coalition is a substance misuse coalition that is facilitated, facilitated by Lewis and Clark Public Health that is working as a community to look at creative and meaningful ways to address substance misuse and its impact on mental health. One of the coalition's six main goals is to improve care coordination and reduce the complication encountered by community members who are seeking substance use disorder services and increase interactions and communications between the providers. To accomplish that, the group is hosting an event to coordinate care providers. Coordinating Hope, a summit on support and recovery, is an event that is going to take place on June 18th, 2025, from 8:30 to 3:30 at Helena College. The event is designed to bring together professionals in Lewis and Clark County who coordinate care with individuals who have substance use disorders and mental health conditions. Currently, we have 36 people registered from over 16 different agencies and organizations. It will include education sessions, a panel of peer support specialists discussing substance use topics, and opportunities to network and build resources. Lewis and Clark Public Health is using our Health Resources and Services Administration grant to bring professionals and peers to speak about a range of topics that we heard would be helpful to these care providers. Consultant Christa Weathers will be a speaker at the event. The consultant will speak about naloxone. This professional services contract with Christa Weathers Consulting LLC will be in total not to exceed $300 for her time to travel and speak about naloxone at the event. The contract has gone through our contract routing process and staff recommends approval. Staff recommends approval, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
None.
I feel like I should ask a question. You're not going to have Christa Weathers come in and talk to us?
Chair Payne, no, she's in Missoula. That's where she is based out of. So just me today.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, believe we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Christa Weathers Consulting LLC as explained by Sarah Sandow.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Christa Weathers Consulting LLC. Is there any further comment? Seeing no further comment, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And you, Sarah? My gosh, you've been busy. Agenda item 3F, contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Montana Public Health Training Center and will be presented by Sarah Sandow.
Final one from me today, I promise. Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the commission.
That's good stuff.
I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. As said in the previous contract, the Strong Roots Coalition is a coalition that is facilitated by Lewis and Clark Public Health to work on substance misuse prevention. They are hosting an event to coordinate care providers that is called Coordinating Hope, a summit on support and recovery. And it's going to take place on June 18th, 2025, from 8:30 to 3:30 at Helena College. The event is designed to bring together professionals in Lewis and Clark County who coordinate care with individuals with substance use disorders and mental health conditions. Lewis and Clark Public Health is using our Health Resources and Services Administration grant to bring professionals to speak at the event. The Montana Public Health Training Center will be a speaker at the event to speak about provider burnout and compassion fatigue. This professional services contract with the Montana Public Health Training Center will be in the total not to exceed $600 for the coordinator, Lydia, for her time to travel and speak at the event. This contract has gone through our contract routing process and staff recommends approval, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the commission? Andy?
I do not.
Tom?
No.
Boy, guess you have them convinced. Seeing no questions from the commission, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Montana Public Health Training Center as presented.
Second.
It, is there any further comment from the commission?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
I do. This being the last of, I think, five items. Thank you, first of all. Sarah, really appreciate it. It's fun to hear your new title, too, as you present. But I just want to point out to those that might be listening here in the audience as well that the, this is just a smattering, these five items of all the wonderful things that our Public Health Department is involved in and facilitating in our community and partnering in and making sure. I guess facilitation is a really good word because a lot of these things may not proceed without our involvement and our taking leadership in the community and being a partner that not only can transition money through the system, but leadership and, and expertise and grant writing, in this case, too, as well. And I want to have a shout out to Jolene Jennings as well, who's been sitting patiently in the audience. And she has had a hand in most all of these items in some way, shape, or form. So really appreciate the work that you do in bringing this stuff to the table and the coordination amongst community entities and efforts and bringing it all together. We come to meetings and things are organized and coordinated for us to consider and look at and talk about. But somebody has to do that. So Jolene, thank you for your good work in the community. And Sarah, so these are all wonderful. And I'm glad that they were presented today. And I hope the community recognizing the good work that's being done out there. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Yes. Yes. Tom, do you have anything?
Couldn't say it better. Well done.
Well, well done. Thank you, Andy and Tom. Let's see. Had our motion, now we get to have a vote. All those in favor of the contract between, all those in favor of approving the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Montana Public Health Training Center, as presented by our friend Sarah Sandow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. This item passes unanimously. Thank you. Ah ha. Next up, item 3G, Designation of Fiscal Year 2026 Earmarked Alcohol Tax Funds, to be presented by Ms. Misty Edwards.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Misty Edwards, County Finance. And before you this morning is the designation of the Fiscal Year 26 earmarked alcohol tax monies. These funds are pass-through funds from the Department of Public Health and Human Services, which receives the tax revenue collected from the sale of all liquor products sold in Montana. This alcohol tax revenue is to be used for the treatment, rehabilitation, and prevention of alcoholism and chemical dependency. The funds are distributed by DPHHS to the county for use by approved private or public programs. The county receives three equal distributions of tax revenues throughout the fiscal year, and if the revenues collected by the state exceed the total estimate, a fourth payment is made in the fall of the next fiscal year. In fiscal year 2024, we receive three distributions of $50,328 each, and a fourth of $51,216, for a total of $202,200. In April, County Finance sent applications to state-approved programs that serve Lewis and Clark County residents. After review and consideration of the responses by an evaluation committee, staff is recommending the fiscal year 26 funds be distributed as follows. 25% to Boyd Andrew, 25% to Intermountain Community Services, 20% to Florence Crittinton, 15% to YWCA, and 15% to Helena Valley Addiction Services. This distribution will serve both the adult and juvenile populations, and pretty close to a 50/50 split within Lewis and Clark County. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Misty. Do you have questions, Tom?
No.
Andy?
Ms. Chair Payne. See, thank you for putting this together, and thank you for the work that you do in helping us distribute these. So, just a reminder to those that might be watching today, last week, it was last week, is all right? Yeah. We had the current recipients of the funds come and tell us about what they've done over the last year, if you remember, Commissioners. And it was very interesting to hear from those groups and all the good work they're doing in the community. So, this is the next year's allocation proposal, and I supported all the way. It used to be that we had one, and then two entities that received all the money, and now we have more that are able and state-certified that can apply for the dollars. And I like the plan that we have, in the best effort we can, to distribute the dollars to half, essentially to adult services, and half to youth and child services. So, happy to support, Commissioner. Thanks for giving me the time to...
Tom, do you have anything?
No, no, I'm going to make a comment as we're voting, so.
Well, in that case, is there any public comment? Seeing none? We need a motion here. Come on.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the designation of fiscal year 2026 earmarked alcohol tax funds, as explained by Misty Edwards.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this designation. Is there any further comments from the Commission?
Chair Payne, if I might, I...
Yes, Tom?
I just want to echo what Commissioner Hunt-Houson said, and I'm particularly supportive of the groups that are among those listed here that take a long-term approach of helping folks. And I think they really make a huge difference, but all of them are making a difference here in our community, and happy to support this.
Thank you. That being said, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this designation, as explained by Misty Edwards. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone voting against it? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. With, next item is the Subdivision Improvement Agreement Extension Request for Scenic Vista's Major Subdivision, project number SUBD 2025-1, no, 2025-010. And Angie Hubbard will be presenting this. Good morning, Angie.
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. Angie Hubbard with Community Development and Planning. Before you today is a request for a subdivision improvements agreement extension for...
Angie, I'm going to have to ask you to speak more slowly. I have hearing issues, and so, bear with me.
Before you today is the Subdivision Improvements Agreement Extension Request for Scenic Vista's Major Subdivision. The blue outline represents the location of Scenic Vista's Major Subdivision. The subdivision is located south of Canyon Ferry Road and east of Lake Helena Drive. Scenic Vista's Major Subdivision was granted preliminary approval on July 18th, 2023, and final plat approval on July 16th, 2024. At the time of final plat approval, the applicant entered into a subdivision improvement agreement with Lewis and Clark County to guarantee that remaining improvements would be completed by June 16th, 2025. Items remaining to be completed include vegetation to be established at 70% for the MPDES, Montana Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, and potentially rebuilding areas of the Stormwater Pond Inlet, if needed due to lack of the required 70% vegetation establishment. The applicant has submitted an extension request, application form, an updated engineer's estimate for the costs associated with the improvements, and at the time of final plat approval, the applicant submitted a cashier's check in the amount of $20,790, and that amount has not changed with the updated subdivision improvement agreement estimate. Dan Carlin, county engineer, has reviewed the cost estimate and agrees with the associated costs for implementing, for completing the remaining improvements, and staff recommends approval of the extension request. And Chair Payne, Commissioners, I'm available with any questions you might have.
The applicant, Joe Nissler, isn't here?
Commissioner Payne, that's correct. He is not here.
Okay.
But he has signed the agreement.
Well, that's fine, but if I have questions for him, it's a little hard to deal with it. So, okay. Turn in questions from the Commission.
Chair Payne, I'll ask a question.
Andy?
Thank you. Just, I think, I know the answer to this, but essentially, we entered into a subdivision improvement agreement at the outset of the preliminary plat approval, and he's completed everything on that list, except for making sure that the stormwater retention facility, the pond and related items meet muster. They pass their required permitting and our essential requirements. And so far, he needs a little more time to get that done, but that's the only remaining item, or items, correct?
Chair Payne, Commissioners? Yes, that's correct. It is the only remaining item, and mostly, it's the establishment of the 70% vegetation to ensure that it won't fail again.
Right.
And yes, it was a condition of approval that allowed him to enter the, into the subdivision improvements agreement, and then at final plat, he realized that he needed that subdivision improvement agreement.
Right. And Chair Payne, if I could...
Andy?
So, just to reiterate, when inspection was done by the number of parties in the county, essentially, this item was recognized that didn't, his vegetation cover, and the failure to meet those requirements for this pond wasn't going to pass in time. He needed more time to do this, so that's really what we're doing. Just giving him a little more time to get this last remaining item done.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair Payne.
Thank you. Tom, do you have anything?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the subdivision improvement agreement extension request for Scenic Vista's Major Subdivision, as presented by Angie Hubbard.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this subdivision improvement agreement. Is there any further comment or questions from the Commission? Seeing none? All in favor of approving the subdivision improvement agreement extension request for Scenic Vista's Major Subdivision, project number SUBD 2025-010, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Now, we've come to the part of our day, we need to have public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda above. You're not here to talk to us? Well, in that case, we adjourn this meeting.